But we wanted to present it, be upfront and show the mayor the two different outcomes of depending on which option he selected. Moving on through the agenda, I think our last item is schedule. That's where Gary would usually give a quick rundown if you want to. We're on schedule, I mean, go ahead.
Yeah, schedule's fine, it's not moving as fast as I like to see it, but there's a lot of things that we're going to have that I'm not used to doing with COVID. Preparing other materials and such things like that. But we're working through them, things around to make everything work. The target date that we really work for right now, the big one coming is steel, choice and deck. Which that all stuff arrives around the first of November. So, right now, we're just getting there, all the little things we can do up until that point done, just to make sure we're staying ahead. So, that's kind of where we're at.
In the packet, there's a CPM schedule, which is kind of a high level look of start to finish of the project. And then Gary also attaches his six week look ahead, which is a more, it's more of a drilled down view of what's happening in the next six weeks. That schedule has been, at the beginning of the project, when we only have a couple subs on site and a few tasks that we're completing, it's fairly limited. Over the next month or so, that schedule will grow drastically. Gary does a really great job of tracking it, Brenna will help out and make sure that we're getting that message out to our subcontractors so they know when to be on site, what they're moving towards next. It's a good tool we use to keep ourselves and our subcontractors online. Last item would be new business. In this instance, we had an item, or in this meeting, we had an item to review existing conditions at library HVAC units and new power, or at the units and concerning the new power entering the building. Gary had noticed that some of the pads for the HVAC units were in pretty rough shape, that's something we brought to the mayor's attention, has, they've since looked at it and I believe have a plan. So, I believe we're developing a plan to address that. At the end of the packet, we normally attach six or eight pictures just to kind of give a snapshot of, or an actual shot of what's actually going on in the site. We do that every meeting. That's a, that was kind of a quick run through, but that's our normal, normal meeting with the mayor.
We normally do these meetings about once a month. And we're not beyond doing them more often if we need to, but what I, one of the things, what I take away, counsel, what I take away from, from it is watching them solve problems before they happen, just because of the organization that they do. So, they're taking a look forward and there's pressure to sit down with, with the mayor once a month and explain and all that. But there's a real good, open dialogue all, every day. And so, as, isn't that right, Gary? Good, open dialogue every day and so, we're, we're on the way and it looks like there's good progress. And as far as we know, we're in pretty good shape as far as our schedule goes.
As the walls go up, you know, and more and more things are going to need to be looked at, changed, there's some things in modification, you know, stuff like that. I know Larry's the ultimate one. Do you, are you planning on getting involved with like BK or Dennis to say, to look at this stuff, to, not to make decisions, but there was a lot of changes. Well, there's a lot of changes, I remember there was one big change was, was the sprinkler system here, I remember this with Tim Thompson, Tim and I went round and round, but, you know, it's one of those things. But that was, that was, that was a lot of the cost saving. My point is, these people are excellent about bringing things to those guys' attention about different things. I can't, you know, make those changes, so, yeah, okay.
So, that forward look is pretty impressive that they do and we're continually solving those problems before they happen. And so, I'm, you know, we're, I'm real happy with the process, so I appreciate all those things you guys look at every day.
Well, Gary's got his name on it, he lives here, so he's going to be, we're going to hold Gary responsible.
Mr. Graves is coming for.
I'd like to make a comment too, but I think Adam, he's been on the ball from the beginning. And he looked at the slab and he worked out there, like Gary and his people did, it's excellent. And also compliment Gary on it's a clean side, there's no dust up. You can actually walk through without stumbling and falling down and just want to give him a compliment.
Appreciate it.
He did a great job. Counsel, y'all have questions? Y'all have questions?
Thanks.
Thank you very much for coming and presenting.
Your bet.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to item B, report from US Utility Board General Manager Jared Crisp. Welcome, Jared.
Thank you, Mayor.
Glad you're here.
Council members. Willis, would you please stand up? He's in training right now to be my assistant, we're hoping to make that switch in January. And the reason why we're not doing it now is because he's in training somebody else to take over his spot, so we want to make this a smooth transition when we get to that point, so. You got a problem, you can't find me, that's the guy you need to talk to.
We just need his cell phone number. We just need his cell phone number.
One eight hundred, Jared.
Yeah. So, I was asked to have a little discussion tonight about some of our utilities and whatnot, so we can do this a couple of different ways. You can ask me questions up now, front, or I can kind of go through our utilities, a little bit of history of where we're at and where we're headed. Because last night, my board approved to recommend to you guys and gals, the new rate structure for the gas side and the water side due to our recent rate increases from our wholesale providers. So, quick background and then we.
Please proceed.
Utility, so I'll start with the big boy, electric. Everybody knows GRDA is a wholesale provider. Back in April 2019, GRDA's Board of Directors approved a new rate structure. That new rate structure moved more of the variable costs to the PCA side, which if you look at your bill now, the PCA side is a little higher than normal, while decreasing their energy costs. So, what this change did was it allowed their rate structure to be in more comparison apples and apples to the independently owned utilities, which IE, PSO, OGN and the co-ops. REC, Vertiga's Rally, stuff like that. So, April 2019, they changed their rates. What GRDA did was they gave the opportunity for all the municipalities, their customers to, they gave a grant of $10,000 if we would do a rate structure, cost of service study. So, they provided $10,000, I think it ended up costing, I don't know, 30, 25, 30,000, but they provided 10, so. They wanted to make sure everybody had the chance to make sure their rates were more in line, because everybody, everybody charges stuff different based on how much they subsidize other utilities or whatnot. So, we did that, so back in November 2019, I brought to my board and I brought to the council, the rate change. At that time, we were, had a rate of 9.03 mils per kilowatt hour, or 9.03 cents per kilowatt hour. So, what I'm passing out now is the PCA, which is the big boy. Just so you kind of know, it starts back in January of 2019. So, if you look, the first three months of 2019, they were pretty low, because they had more of their cost in their energy charge. Now, you kind of follow it on page one, it kind of starts to incline ever so slightly. So, if you recall, April 2019, that's when the whole rate structure changed. So, November 2019, we changed ours. We dropped our rates 0.0199 kilowatts per hour, or per kilowatt hour, which gave us a energy charge of 7.04 cents per kilowatt hour. And at that time, we also got approved a line loss factor from our last previous fiscal year, because there's line losses and everything. Transformers humming miles of lines that we have in the system, so that was a good way to collect some of that loss that we have. Never been done, but that's what we do. First year we started, it averaged 7.2 percent. Right now, it's at 5.7 percent. So, Travis and his crew are doing a good job, we're reconducting lines, changing lines out, making improvements, so we're losing some of that line loss. So, first page, you can kind of see, you know, it is what it is, but let's just talk about the, the big boy. The storm we had back in February, the storm that nobody ever thought, you turn the page, that we would have. Well, guess what? We had it. Some of you may have been on our substation number two that we had to take out for 45 minutes twice. We had to shed some load because the renewables were not picking up where they needed to, solar and wind was nowhere. And we had some wellheads on the natural gas side that froze up and they had to start doing some curtailment, so GRDA called. We learned a lot in that winter storm. They implemented a new texting, group text, because this happened during the weekend and stuff, or it was a holiday actually, that Monday. They were sending emails, but a lot of us, you know, we don't respond to emails when we're off work, but we get texts, we respond to them, so they did that. I mean, unfortunately, they are governed by the SPP, when they say you got to shed 50 megawatts, 10 megawatts, whatever, they have to call us and we got 15 minutes to get ready. So, the announcements weren't too fast, we tried to get them on the Facebook page, but we did the best we could. We took out sub number two, and that was my call, so if anybody lived there, which I live on sub number two, you all be mad at me, but we kept sub number three up because that's a hospital, because that's the first thing, it has to stay up always. And the second thing, I hate to say it, is Walmart. Because you got to go somewhere, you can go. And if it's out for more than 10 minutes, Vinnyville calls us nonstop, where are you at, where are you at? So, he's used to that. Sub number one is on, Walmart's on that and that gives the south, that south feeder comes, hits a lot of the businesses downtown, or down the highway, so. It is what it is, number two, residential, sorry, we got hit twice.
It's all right, we forgive you.
Yeah, my wife doesn't though. So, if you look, you know, when we first started this, we were at 0.02 back in April of 2019, and it's, it kind of jumps around. Well, this winter storm Yuri made a, caused issues for everybody. I'm sure you read, natural gas prices shot through the roof. SPP basically told everybody in their market, you're generating no matter at what cost. So, what that means is they're paying premiums for the natural gas at one time, natural gas at one day, it might have been Wednesday or Thursday that week.
You show, you said 0.02 on April, in April?
April of 2019.
April of 2019, 0.02, okay, that's the first line, okay.
Yeah, that was, that was when it first implemented, so if you would have added that with what we had, we were under what we previously charged, basically. So, but now, if you look at February, you didn't get really hit that hard, but in March, it got hit, and now it's just a straight incline. Natural gas prices are real volatile. We still have a hangover from the winter storm. We've had this hurricane in Louisiana, it's basically shut down. 92 percent of the Louisiana offshore natural gas supply, nearly 8, 98 percent of the Louisiana offshore crude was shut down as of a week ago, yesterday. So, GRDA, they forecast their PCA on a 12-month basis and they adjust it once a month. So, the bad thing about it was is August of, August 4th, they figured basically for the next 12 months, it would be about 25.9 to 25.27 mils. But if you look at the green bars from the top, we got their PCA for September, it changed at 27. I mean, and it's all due to natural gas pricing. And Dan Sullivan, the CEO of GRDA, had a pretty good presentation at last week's board meeting, and he, every, every board meeting, he shows how the generation's doing and their portfolio, the generation's what's generating what. And this time last year, it was like 0 percent coal. This time this year, it's 20. Greg number two, which is coal fire number two, it's been running since June. It's been down a couple weeks for maintenance, but I mean, it, it's not like, it's normally not like that. Greg two's not supposed to be the one carrying the load, Greg three, which is a new coal fire combustible plant, is supposed to carry it.
It used to actually cost money to run the coal fired side.
Right, and if your coal fire is in, cheaper than your gas, then, you know, we're, it's in a bad situation right now. Something's not right. So, with that, and I want to preface that, this storm for February, it cost GRDA $102 million. A little bit more than that, I'll just hold numbers, 102 million dollars for what they, they were charged by their natural gas provider to generate, because the SPP, which is Southwest Power Pool, made them. Out of that 102 million, for that seven to 10 days that we, they were providing power for prior, our side of the bill was 1.418677, 1.4 million, 1418677. That is our bill, that was our invoice. In this last legislative session, the, the House, the state, they created a securitization bill to help these regulated and unregulated companies help foot this bill. So, but the problem is, with anything with the state or the local, with the federal government is, it doesn't move very quick. So, just last week, they got their application. So, we're, we're haven't even touched this bill yet. So, I just want everybody to know, the storm was gone seven months ago, but we haven't paid our bill.
That lasted how many days?
Well, the extreme weather was, you know, seven days, but the extreme pricing was four.
Right, that's what I, for people to understand, all this cost was incurred.
Yeah, in a four days span.
In four days.
Wow.
But I mean, you know, the extreme temperatures were probably two weeks worth. But I mean, those four days when we had to start curtailing power, that's, that's when it hit as hard, and that's when prices shot up at 1,500 bucks, the daily spot price.
Tore up a lot of wind power too.
Yeah, I mean, they were froze up, solar, of course, froze up, natural gas has some wellheads froze up. But that's kind of it on the natural gas side. We're looking at, we're going to have to make a decision come pretty quick in October, because they're filling out, GRDA's staff is filling out the applications, so they have to know how much, they're figuring of the 102 million dollars that they owe, which they've already paid for, because they had a pretty good, they had some cash on hand that, which you got to have times like this. But just because they got cash on hand, we got to pay them back, the end user has to pay them back, so it flows downhill. They're thinking they may have to, for that securitization bill, about 70 to 80 million dollars. You know, they'll sell bonds on it and stuff, and it'll be a 10-year payback, there will be some carrying costs. We do not know what those carrying costs are, but they're figuring 3% or less. Which 3% is not much in my mind, or less. I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty good interest rate.
So, what you're saying basically is the customer's going to be hit with a monthly charge for 10 years.
Yeah.
Basically going to add it to their bill.
You figure, I mean, I'm assuming three percent by my calculations, if we do it over a ten-year life, average customer may consume a thousand kilowatt hours. I mean, it's anywhere from five hundred to thousand. You know, it all depends on the reliability or their insulation in their house, efficiencies and whatnot. But I'm figuring on top of our PCA that I just showed you right here, and we put our line loss on top of that, so you do that and multiply that times one point oh five seven, uh which is our line loss for last fiscal year. And um, once you get that number, you add point zero zero one five. So your typical user, say a thousand kilowatt hours, they'll see on their bill, just for that point zero zero one five, a dollar fifty additional. Not that bad, but they never thought this storm would happen in February. What's it gonna say? Can't happen next February or the February after. I know PSO, I've been doing some reading up on them. You know, they were talking ten years, you know, but they're like seven hundred and fifty billion dollars that they had to spend or whatever. But um they're looking at carrying theirs that twenty, twenty-five years is what I've been reading. GRDA's looking at ten, or they're also adding an option that, of course, you can pay it all upfront and be done with it. Or the other option is carried out over twelve months with no carrying cost. You wanna do that, just multiply that dollar fifty times ten, because it'd be ten years. They'd be, you know, um, you figure I pulled up a.
Does that include businesses too?
No, it's just your typical residential customer. I pulled up a, a gas station, I'm not gonna say names. They use two hundred, or sorry, twenty thousand kilowatt hours if they're on demand, they could pay another rate, but they gotta still pay for that energy. They would pay thirty bucks extra for ten years. So if you make it, pull it back to one year, that'd be three hundred dollars a month, basically. You know, that's gonna fluctuate depending on how hot, how cold. And that's just your average. Um, one of the big boys, hundred and sixty thousand kilowatt hours. Be about two hundred and forty bucks. Multiply that times ten, twenty-four hundred dollars a month, you know? Those numbers, they're gonna see those.
Got hospitals, schools?
That, those, that would be some of the big boys.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're gonna see that. So we gotta determine, or we as a whole, my board and the council, how we're gonna ca- how we're gonna attack this. Um, I'm gonna have it on my board meeting in October to get their feel. And then in this second board meeting in October, hopefully we have a decision for GRDA so we can get them what they need so we can get moving. I would say they're looking at this maybe starting by the time they get this application turned into the state or to whichever organist department of the state is taking it, um, January, February, maybe March, when they're, they're gonna start hitting us. Some customer, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, so what if you broke it down to five years instead of ten or?
Uh, that dollar fifty be.
Yeah, it'd be half of that.
Three dollars.
Yeah.
Three dollars.
Yeah. Uh, so some customers are paying half of it upfront and they're gonna carry it out over twelve months. They're gonna pay that and then they're gonna have it carry out over their customers for three years, you know? Everybody's gonna do it different. A lot of them wanna do it ten years so that they keep their capital in their account and not be hitting it. I'll be honest, I got a unrestricted account that we have that in case at the end of the year I spend more money than I, I should and I need to break even, I pull that out. I got one point one, one point one, six, seven, and some change. So if we did that, that would deplete that and that would put me out on a ledge that I'm probably gonna be jumping off of.
Yeah.
So.
You know, the, the ba- bad thing about this thing is that you, you got businesses, small mom and pops.
Yeah.
Business hamburger places, you got the Walmarts and everybody else, that, you know, what are they gonna do? They're gonna pass the cost on to us.
You're gonna charge another ten or fifteen cents for hamburgers.
We talk about economic development, you know, and stuff like that. And that's what you're talking about here is economic, how it's gonna affect. We can do this. Down here later on in the agenda here in just a few minutes, we're gonna talk about a re- a reimbursement of one point six million dollars. You know, what would, to me, it might possibly, I would hope that you and, you and the mayor would look at and the council would look at possibly giving a gift back to the citizens of Pryor, paying that, figuring out a way, possibly using, paying that one point four million, using that one point four million dollars to pay that bill, make everybody whole as an economic development, put the money back in their pockets, tell Walmart and everybody else. And then maybe some people would come and say, oh, look what Pryor's done. And if we did that, it'd put us on the map. So I'm gonna strongly suggest that we look at paying that, you all look at that, using that one point six million we have, you, use one point four or whatever portion of that to pay, to pay that back.
Pay the bill off?
Pay the bill off and come back to council and your board and giving the people and giving the people and the business of Pryor a gift. Say, citizens, the city council has given, and MUB are giving you a gift.
Right.
For economic development. So that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be one of my suggestions.
Yeah, I mean, people are gonna have to put this in their, their rates. I mean.
Oh, yeah.
They're gonna have, you know, the prices of consumer goods have gone up and gas keeps rising. I mean, nothing seems to be going down, so you know.
Especially now, whenever you're gonna have rate increases on, on.
Gas.
Gas and, and then their PCA. You know, when you, you can, you can look on Facebook and you go to these, and you go to, you go to the barber shop or, you know, go to places like it. A lot of people have struggling paying their bills now, so.
Yeah.
I'd strongly, I would, I would ask you two to really look at that hard and possibly, and we the council, look at using that one point six million. We're gonna have this in a minute. Because we're gonna get some more money next year, similar to this one point six million next year, too, so.
The uh, the one point, I mean, we'll talk about that.
Go ahead, sure. Yeah, so anyway, yeah, but look at that and see what, and you give it, I mean, call it a gift to the citizens of Pryor.
But that's the electric side. Any, any questions on the electric side before I move to the, any question? Let's jump over to the natural gas side. Don't really have a, I mean, that's, that's a big boy, too. Um, just FYI, winter storm Yuri cost um us hundred and sixty-five thousand. Which is not bad in my mind. Um, whenever you're talking to others, we're in the millions. We were, we were locked in at a good rate. I mean, of course, we used a lot of our usage, so we were paying a premium on that. But we had used over what we had nominated through our contract, but um we were set up pretty. We were set up at our rate back then. My purchase rate was two dollars and fifty cents a unit. Unfortunately, that contract ended June thirtieth. Back in the day, when we would do this, the way it worked is you wanted to, you wanted to get a contract in the middle of the summer because your volumes, your storage capacities are up and gaining, nobody's using. So you're getting, you're getting a pretty good rate for twelve months. You can go twelve months, twenty-four months, thirty-six months. Of course, the more months you go out, the more risks they're taking, the higher your unit's gonna cost. But you know, it is what it is. I mean, gas has been so cheap for so long, people forgot that back in the day, it was at eight dollars, seven dollars. Well, guess what? That's where we're headed to now. If you don't mind, my wholesale provider sent me an email um Monday on September thirteenth, he got to give me what's going on. If I, I'd like to read a little bit of it, just so you know, what I get, I gave it to my board. So basically, the most obvious impact on this market right now is that we're still experiencing what I'm calling Yuri hangover. It's like the hangover that doesn't go away, probably like some that we're boarding raise this weekend, but um. Or at least that's how I feel. Currently, utilities and marketing companies are still plunging deep into their winter supply packages, but producers are shying away from first of month FERC pricing after the taste they got in February from the crazy daily pricing. So what that means is some people have their contracts set up on first of month pricing. May first, June first, the first of the month that comes out a rate. Um, I think at that time, and don't quote me on this, but it was a little over three dollars. You know, February first, I think you got over three bucks. And we were setting at two fifty. So we're setting pretty. We're setting good. Like I said, when they, that peak of the storm, it was fifteen hundred dollars or more. You know, you talk price guiding, that's price guiding. Why? I don't know. I kind of have my suggest, my opinions, but you don't wanna hear my opinion. So that's what first of month pricing is. Since first of month, FERC pricing is still a necessary part of winter supply portfolios, the markets keep increasing that first of month premiums to help lure producers back into that first of month market. As a result, we're seeing unprecedented highs in first of month premiums. I um looked on the market for the month of September, from September first through September seventeenth. You know, it opened up September first at four dollars and forty cents um a unit. It closed down on September seventeenth at five dollars and ten cents. So it keeps going up. They're looking at winter pricing hundred or at or near that seven dollar mark. We nominated about eighty percent of our load, of our three-year, three-year, three or five. I could go through so many numbers, I have to think about it. But um of our historical load, so the last three Januaries, take that average, multiply it times point eight percent, that's what we nominate. So that's what I got that price set. So the way I see it is, I mean, it's a crap shoot. I could have got a hundred percent, but what's to say a hundred percent? Um, we use ninety percent and I'm giving it back to the supplier at a different rate. So we always, always did eighty, but what I'm looking at now is if I see that it might be dropping, so, which I don't think it's going to, but if it does, I might try to get back in and get ten more percent, which might weigh my average down just a hair. I mean, then I'm playing that game. But if I go ten percent of, say, I mean.
Scrap shoot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just rolling the dice, hoping I don't.
Yep.
Crap out.
It can go up, up as easily as it goes down.
Yeah, so um I've got this set, set until um September first of, uh, till August thirty-first of next year. So we're gonna keep playing, we're gonna keep playing. Um, so here's the problem. You go from four six, two fifty to four sixty-three, that's a two dollar thirteen cent um increase. That's what I asked my board to recommend, to provide for you for an increase for inside-city limit customers. Charter says all I gotta do is bring that to the council. Outside-city customers are gonna get the same adjustment if everything gets approved. Say nothing gets approved, say no, forget this, you guys, I'm tired of paying. We used three hundred and thirty-eight thousand units last year as a whole, so you multiply that times two point one three. About seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars that I would be eating. We all know what I give the city, right? Mayor? How much I give the city?
Seven hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Ex-mayor. We do, just, just so you know, we write a check, starting in August, monthly check. We don't do it in July because it's the new, new fiscal, you know? Fiscal year, no money, I'll look at books. Sixty-four thousand, six hundred dollars a back end. June, we get two checks. So seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred dollars. I mean, back when we adjusted the rates back then, the city was kind of hurting for some money. So it was like, hey, would you need some more? So I mean, before it's half a million dollars, I believe.
Three hundred, three hundred thousand when I first, when I first.
When you first, but it is half a million.
It's half a million.
And then. And then, so um now we're up to seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred dollars. People don't also realize that we pay for all the street lighting and everything. You know, that costs us about sixty-two thousand five hundred. You know, we um, we go and partners with the cleaning lady that's on your staff, because she cleans our two, you know, we got sixteen grand. So you know, we help pay. I don't think it's gonna come to that because I think we all, we all see the light and the, the world is where it is today. I mean, basically, the way I see it, the people that I am concerned with are the senior citizens living off of their retirement from the state that have put their time in and should not be having to deal with this. I don't feel sorry for the ones that's living off the state. When I look outside my door and I see a sign that says there's nine thousand jobs open in the county. So I mean, I told my staff, if this gets approved, guess what? You're gonna start getting a whole lot more phone calls November and Oct- uh, December, all the way down. I mean, it is what it is. But you know, if you're talking money to help pay for that, you know, or if you decide go somewhere else, I don't know. How about we put a little kittle to the side and we figure out a way to, you know, come up with some, a procedure or whatever, too. Okay, this pot is for somebody that needs help paying their bill. I mean, there's a lot of churches, there's uh card, a lot of, there's a lot of help out there, Cherokee Nation, you know, the different tribals. But um that could be another option if that's could be paid, if that could be used, you know? I mean, I'm not telling you what to do with the money, but I'll help out wherever I need.
That also helped the economic development, here you go again, because that's gonna impact uh your businesses again.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on. Uh, water, we, anybody, any more questions on gas? I could talk for another thirty minutes if you want, but I don't know. If you're getting as long, you're going in executive session, that probably lasts an hour. But uh, any questions on natural gas side?
Jared, you're not making this bill any better.
I know. Water. Of course, we got hit, uh, OWA, Mid-America Dusty Park is where we get our water. They hit us with a four cent increase back in July first. I didn't bring it to you guys back in July because I knew our contract was ending in the gas and, I mean, just for, if people wanna know, we used three hundred and forty-five million gallons of water last year is what we sold. Four cents isn't that much, but it's based on four cents per thousand gallons, so three hundred and forty-five thousand units. You know, it's thirteen thousand eight hundred. Nothing compared to the seven hundred and seventy-five or seven hundred and nineteen thousand, but it's still, I don't wanna get behind. So natural gas, water, just come in front of council next council meeting, uh, first council meeting in October. My door's always open if you got any more questions. If John or Brianna wanna come by, I give them a quick presentation on what we're talking about now. Or I can do it again. I don't think you guys want me to stand up here and talk again this long, but I'm here for you guys. I'm here for my board. I'm here for the customers.
Well, I asked Jared to come in and, and knowing that this is gonna come before council, so I asked Jared to come in, in today. And uh, this is kind of precursor uh to what is gonna come uh next council meeting. Any more questions for Jared?
We appreciate all the work you're putting into. Thank you, Jared, and thank you for just.
Did you realize when I started here, it's gonna be seven years in April? My hair was as dark as deer's. I've loved the women in the office, in my wife and kids.
Yolanda was, Yolanda pointed that out, posted on here.
Yeah.
You should see my mother by the badge when I first started. This is experience. But I appreciate you guys. Uh, like I said, my door's always open. Travis's door's always open, if you can find him. But uh, yeah, we just wanna do what's best for the customers and we understand that we're during trying times. If I can say anything, I mean, it's up to the consumer to conserve gas, electric, you know? Turn up the, you turn that air conditioner up just a little bit, couple degrees, it's gonna show, it's gonna save a lot. You know, I mean, it's like I tell my wife and kids, you're cold, put a hoodie on. Get a blanket. You're hot, go jump in the pool, cool off. I'm touching my thermostat. With that, I'll entertain any more questions you may have on me.
Thank you very much, Jared.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much, Jared. We'll go to item C, Report American Recovery Plan Act. Uh, council, I handed out a uh little narrative uh that I'm gonna follow. And uh, that first page, and uh, uh, those in the gallery, uh, uh, bear with me. Terry, I'm gonna bring this to you. You can follow this. So uh, council, on, on the first page there, it says, Dear Mayor, that first paragraph, it says, we're pleased to inform you that your municipality is now eligible to start the process to claim your coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund payment through the American Rescue Plan Act. So uh, what I've done is I've tried to uh condense some of the things uh that are here, uh, in this information. And I've highlighted some of the pages that, that follow this first page. Uh, the last sentence in that first paragraph, according to your municipality's population, as determined by the federal government, your municipality is eligible to pay your local financial recovery fund payment through your application. That second paragraph along uh, uh, down, down toward the, the middle there, the, the sentence says, first payment will be distributed on successful completion of your application. I did make uh that application this past week. And uh, uh, the second, uh, then it says, the second will be apportioned twelve months later. So half of, uh, half of the, uh, about half of that one point six million will come in uh pretty quickly now. And then the second part will be about twelve months later. Says your municipality will. Says your municipality will, will have until December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four to allocate these funds, and until December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six to spend the funds. So, what we're doing is we're following rules that are put forward, uh, by the federal government. Next paragraph, by accepting these funds, your municipality is agreeing to spend them in accordance with the law. Unlike previous economic recovery payments, your municipality will be responsible for budgeting, allocating, and auditing these funds if necessary. The municipality will be self-certifying the eligibility, acceptance, and expenditure of the funds, although all self-certification will be submitted to and reviewed by the federal government. So, we will be, uh, we'll be submitting, uh, reports. The first one, uh, is gonna be on October thirty-first. The next paragraph down, the Oklahoma Municipal League, in conjunction with the State of Oklahoma, has assembled a team of municipal experts to assist you through the process. Uh, skip, uh, sentence, this, uh, team will also be available throughout the program by providing resources, how to utilize these dollars wisely in compliance with federal regulations, and to assist you municipality in completing required annual reporting, beginning October thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one. So, coming up the end of next month, uh, will be the first report that's, uh, that's required. The next page, uh, is a packet of eight pages, and I'll go through these, uh, quickly. This is a fax sheet, uh, coronavirus state fiscal, uh, local fiscal recovery funds will deliver three hundred and fifty billion dollars for state, local, territorial, and tribal governments to respond to the COVID-nineteen emergency and bring back jobs. This was published in, on May the tenth, and, uh, has been available, uh, through the, uh, OML, uh, website, and that's where I, where I, uh, got this from. Uh, I'd like to start, uh, all the way at the bottom of that page, where you see it's highlighted, these funds deliver resources that recipients can invest in building, maintaining, and upgrading their water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. As I look at the needs of, uh, the city of, uh, the city of Pryor, and, uh, uh, the, uh, water in the sewer, the stormwater, uh, also the, uh, the broadband infrastructure, would follow the guidelines that the federal government would have for us to use these dollars. Anything that, uh, that we decide to do regarding using these dollars, we will vet through our city attorney and make sure that we are following the rules, because we will be responsible and they'll hold us accountable. So, uh, on page two, uh, you can see the funding amounts, uh, and the type. What we are considered in Pryor is a non-entitlement unit of local government. So, nineteen billion, uh, point, nineteen point five billion dollars have been assessed, or have been, uh, granted to the different, uh, different municipalities that are in this non-entitlement unit of local government, uh, throughout the country. The bottom, so the uses of the funding, uh, the bottom there, page two, within the categories of eligible uses, recipients have broad flexibility to decide how best to use the funding to meet their needs in their communities. Recipients may use coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds too. And the next, uh, page, page three, those, uh, different items there that are, uh, that are highlighted. That first item, support public health expenditures. Well, our county has recently, uh, awarded, uh, a significant amount of money to our local hospital, and that's, uh, that's the county who has also received ARPA funds, uh, is, uh, uh, awarding to our local hospital through the support of health, uh, health expenditures. So, the other items address negative economic impacts caused by public health emergency, replacement lost public sector venue, provide premium, pay for essential workers. What, uh, most, uh, what most, uh, likely applies to us in our situation is that last item, invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So, making necessary investments to improve the access to clean drinking water, support vital wastewater and stormwater infrastructure, and expand access to broadband internet. If you could, go on over to page seven. And it says there, item six, they're investing in water and sewer infrastructure, uh, would be drinking water, infrastructure projects, wastewater infrastructure projects, managing stormwater, and then the next, uh, paragraph there, to identify those water and sewer infrastructure investments that are the highest priority in their communities. So, bear in mind, all of these suggestions are the suggestions for our particular size of, of, uh, of community, and, uh, they've identi-, uh, we can identify that, uh, the drinking water, the wastewater, the stormwater management, and the, the broadband infrastructure, uh, are the items that most closely, uh, fall into the category of us following the law about how we use these funds. So, item seven, uh, there on that page seven, investing in broadband infrastructure. I learned this past week, uh, a week ago, at, uh, the OML Mayor's Conference in Oklahoma City, that, uh, there are gonna be some significant, uh, broadband infrastructure dollars that are gonna be available to us. And they encouraged us not to use, uh, this particular funding for the broadband infrastructure, uh, component, but to wait until those monies would be available, and then we would use those, those monies from a different, uh, tranche of funds that would be available to us.
Is that, is that in, in additional funding for broadband, is that? Now, from what I've been reading and seeing, that's for, basically for big cities, you know, and we, you know, we don't fall, we don't fall under a, uh, la-, uh, as I'm gonna call it, an economic underdeveloped city, so, underdeveloped units, like any use on that broadband funding. That's, basically, that's for big cities, and what I'm seeing is, have you, we have a, a definition of what funding for this, what kind of?
No, I asked for that, uh, a week ago, when I was at the OML Mayor's Conference, and so, all that's being kinda, kinda being developed right now. And, uh, uh, you are, you are correct, uh, in that most of the broadband, most of those broadband monies are designed to go to the larger population centers.
Yeah, it's like, it's like Bolt, when the Bolt came around this area, you know, Bolt, I get Bolt out of, out of Grove. They went to, you know, Kenwood, they went to Slyna, they went to Grove, they went to the smaller communities and they, you know, they call it, I don't know, I'm gonna call it low to moderate income, they didn't meet the income guideline level, and we felt, we was right in that trap in the middle, so, it didn't affect us. So, we look at that, I, you know, as we look at this, I encourage us to make sure OML, talk to OML.
Correct, correct, and also, uh, and also consult with, uh, with legal, make sure that we're, uh, we're going the right direction. So, uh, anyway, this one point six, uh, million dollars, um, when we're talking about water and wastewater and stormwater, uh, uh, stormwater management, uh, you know, uh, I would, I would promote, I would promote that, uh, that with these monies, we would, uh, we would award, uh, award some of these monies, half, probably half these monies to, uh, to Municipal Utility Board, and, um, to, to you, you can use the whole one point six million dollars right now, Jared, I mean, I know you can.
Twenty-four million.
Yeah, you can use twenty-four million, but, uh, uh, so, it'll be up to city council, though, to appropriate, to appropriate how these, how these monies are, are used. So, when we, when we receive the monies, then we will have responsibility, then, to make plans about how we use the monies and, and report then to the federal government, so.
The M U B is responsible for the water and sewer anyways.
Correct.
That's, you know.
So, the stormwater stuff is, uh, things that, uh, that we would be responsible for, but, uh, the water and sewer would be Municipal Utility.
Again, when you lead this thing, and I've been dealt, I've been involved with this thing for quite some reason, at this thing. You know, it, if you read it real close, you can cut a check for every citizen in Pryor. I think that, that every citizen could get a check, and the counties would determine that too, if they wanted to. Again, I would ask us to really look close about paying this one point four million dollar bill, that would, is the economic development, and I think that's part of the process, and I think it's, that's an allowable use, you know, it's my understanding, that's, that's an allowable use, but that's somebody else through somebody, that's an allowable use, but it may not be one of the one point four, we may wanna just cut it down somewhat. But, but that'd be a great way to do economic development and help all the citizens and the businesses and say, again, thank you very much, because I, my understanding is there's gonna be more of this to come next year, similar to this amount.
That's what they're saying.
Yeah, and we all know how that works.
Yeah, that's what they're saying, so.
But again, I like just.
To your point, uh, to your point, council, Trammell, on page three, where it, uh, lists those, those, uh, different items. So, one of those items, replace lost public sector revenue, and, and so it would come under that.
Yeah.
So, your suggestion would come under that, uh, that use. So, anyway, council have, will have, uh, uh, will have responsibility, uh, to, uh, decide how we use the funds. So, this is, uh, uh, keep this, refer to it, and, uh, this will be some of the guidance that, that we use.
Merry Christmas, citizens of Pryor.
So, uh, yeah, what I wanted to mention that I forgot to mention in my report was, um, you know, GRDA, that ten-year, uh, frame, timeline, if you pay it off early, there's no penalty, but you are gonna have to pay that carrying cost.
Well, I understand it.
There's no penalty if you pay it off before that ten-year timeline. I did, I forgot to mention that, I apologize, but that, um.
But, but it's gonna reduce our cost, it's gonna reduce considerably, that's something that you two could work out.
I mean, I, like the mayor said, it's up to the council to provide half, or if you wanna go all iron game or whatever. I mean, and my board would be tickled pink to pay for that one point four million dollar that's not hanging out over our head. But, um, like I said, it's, and like the mayor said, it's up to the council, and.
I hate to be, you know, I don't, I don't see anywhere in these things that they allow you to spend it out, that you can put it against a, uh, utility bill.
City candidates.
I'm not finding it, which, which one would it be?
Replace public res- sector revenue, you just have, you can do it.
Taking about, um.
Yeah, but where, where does that, where does that, how does that?
So, I think what you should know about the act is approximately two hundred and seventy-five pages long.
Yeah, yeah.
When he said we need to talk to legal counsel, he would talk to his legal counsel, and I would definitely talk to my legal counsel, so we would have two lawyers not in the same room, cause that's never good.
Then you've got Oklahoma Municipal League, and then you also have the.
You got O-MAG, O-MAG.
Mag, mag, and everybody else, so yes, yeah, it's, you read that whole two hundred and seventy-five page.
We wanna make sure that it's legal.
It is legal, I can tell you right now, it is legal, cause I've read it and I've asked.
Sign it and date it.
Sign it and date, it is legal.
No, um, that's all I got.
Thank you, thank you, Jared. Um, so, council, um, any other questions, uh, on that item C, uh, about this, about this document and about the report? Okay, hearing none, uh, then we'll move on to item D, possible executive session pursuant to the Oklahoma Meeting, Open Meeting Act, for the purpose of discussing any matter where disclosure of information would violate confidential requirements of state or local law. Two five, uh, two five O S three oh seven B seven. Is there a motion to move to executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Shitwood, second, Smith, call for vote.
Trump, sure.
Yes.
Vance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Shitwood?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, we'll adjourn to executive session, and this will not be long, so. Hang around if you'd like.
Yeah.
I said that last time.
We need order pizza. We need order pizza.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to, back to order.
Yeah.
Item E, discussion of possible action regarding resuming regular session. No action taken during executive sessions. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion Shitwood, second. Smith, call for vote.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Shitwood?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item F, discussion of possible action regarding approval pursuant to City of Prior Creek Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual, Chapter thirteen, Section thirteen dash eight dash D of the Leave Sharing Program for the additional hours as the emergency condition of a City of Prior Creek employee requires. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Chip, or Shropshire and second Smith. Discussion? Hearing none, call for vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Shitwood?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five, there is no city attorney's report tonight. Item six, discussion of possible action on considered agenda. Item A, approval minutes, September seventh, two thousand twenty-one, council meeting. Item B, approval payroll purchase orders through October first, two thousand twenty-one. Item C, approval claims for purchase orders through September twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Item D, acknowledged receipt of deficient purchase orders. Item E, discussion of possible action regarding authorizing fee waiver for DHS to use the Graham Community Building one to two times per month for staff training and/or meetings with Mays County DHS, customers, and community partners. Item F, discussion of possible action authorizing mayor to sign the Emergency Management Performance Grant, fiscal year two thousand twenty-one sub grant application. Item G, discussion of possible action regarding hiring Kelsey Kearns as fitness coordinator at the Prior Creek Recreation Center, Range D, Step One, annual wage thirty-five, thirty-three thousand five hundred ten dollars. Item H, discussion of possible action regarding bids received for new flooring in Boys and Girls Club at the Prior Creek Recreation Center and accepting a bid of twenty-one thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars to Architectural Flooring LLC as in the best interest of the city from Recreation Center Repair and Maintenance Account, eight-four-eight-four-five-five-zero-nine-one. Other bids received, CNB Carpets, nineteen thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars ninety-one cents, Oxley Floor Coating, twenty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. Item I, discussion of possible action regarding bids received for new weight room equipment for the Prior Creek Recreation Center and accepting a bid of fifty-one thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars forty-two cents received from Advanced Exercise Fitness Solutions from Recreation Center Capital Outlay Ash Equipment Account, eight-four-eight-four-five-five-four-one-zero. Other bids received, Push Pedal Pull, fifty-four thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars nineteen cents, CNG Fitness, fifty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty dollars. Item J, discussion of possible action regarding bids received from new weightlifting plates for the Prior Creek Recreation Center and accepting a bid of thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars forty-eight cents received from Advanced Exercise Fitness Solutions from Recreation Center Capital Outlay Equipment Account, eight-four-eight-four-five-five-four-one-zero. Other bids received, CNG Fitness, fourteen thousand six hundred forty-five dollars, Rogue Fitness, twenty thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. Item K, discussion of possible action regarding declaring the following equipment at the Prior Creek Recreation Center surplus. A, Cybex Elliptical Model Number six-ten-A, serial number two-one-two-dash-zero-eight-six-one-one-zero, Item B, Kaiser Spine Bike, Model Number zero-zero-five-five-zero-one Papa Bravo Charlie, Serial Number one-five-zero-eight-zero-three-three-three-four-eight-five. C, Sports Arc Stationery Bike, Model Number X-Ray Tango-two-zero, Serial Number zero-one-three-two-nine-two-nine. Item D, Matrix Rower Model Number Mike X-Ray Rower zero-one, Serial Number Alpha Romeo, E, Viking Commercial Stove, Inventory Tag Number zero-three-six-zero-nine, Model Papa Foxtrot zero-three-one-three-two-three. Item L, discussion of possible action regarding approval of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Prior Creek and Mays County Fourth Circuit and Network Systems for the new nine-one-one system for the Prior Creek Police Department and Mays County nine-one-one. Item M, discussion of possible action regarding approval of an expenditure of three thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars to Leeds Online for new criminal investigative software for the Prior Creek Police Department from account number zero-two-two-one-five-five-two-six-zero. This software will help track stolen property. Item N, discussion of possible action regarding an expenditure in the amount of forty thousand seventy-five dollars to Superior Auto Group for the purchase of a two thousand twenty-one Chevy Tahoe SS-V four-wheel drive for the Prior Creek Police Department from Property Damage Account nine-six-nine-six-five-five-five-six-zero. Balance as of June thirty, two thousand twenty-one, fifty thousand eight hundred eight dollars three cents. This is the only police Tahoe that has been located according to, ordering from two thousand twenty-two Tahos has already been closed. Mark Allen Chevrolet has a four-wheel drive civilian model for fifty-five thousand six hundred dollars. And Jim Norton Chevrolet has a two-wheel drive civilian model for fifty thousand dollars. Item O, discussion of possible action regarding promotion of Don Fraley from Labor Range A, Step Two, Annual Wage thirty thousand five hundred sixteen dollars to A Operator, Range D, Step Two, Annual Wage thirty-six thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars, effective on ten to two thousand twenty-one. Item P, discussion of possible action regarding purchase of a two thousand twenty-two John Deere Gator X-Ray Uniform, Victor-eight-six-five-Mike from Deere and Company at state bid price of eighteen thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars eighteen cents, which includes a trading credit of one thousand seven hundred dollars from Cemetery Capital Outlay Account, four-four-four-four-five-five-four-one-three. Item Q, discussion of possible action regarding purchase of a John Deere Zulu-nine-nine-seven Romeo Diesel NA mower from Deere and Company at state bid price nineteen thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars thirty-eight cents, which includes trading credit of seven hundred fifty dollars from Cemetery Capital Outlay Account, four-four-four-four-five-five-four-one-three. Would anybody like for me to catch my breath? Item R, discussion of possible action regarding purchase of two thousand twenty-two John Deere Gator XUV-eight-six-five-M from Deere and Company at state bid price of seventeen thousand six hundred nine dollars eighteen cents, which includes trading credit of two thousand four hundred fifty dollars from Parks Capital Outlay Account, four-four-four-four-five-five-four-one-five. Item S, discussion of possible action regarding expenditure in the amount of forty-seven thousand two hundred seventy dollars to Merit Tennis and Track Systems for repair and resurfacing of four courts at the Prior Creek Whittaker Park from Parks Capital Outlay Account, four-four-four-four-five-five-four-one-five. Item T, discussion of possible action regarding hotel motel final expense report from Prior Area Chamber of Commerce for the two thousand twenty Christmas Parade Lights in the amount of one thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars ninety-five cents from account number seven-five-seven-five-five-five-zero-nine-two. Item U, discussion of possible action regarding hotel motel allocation for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fiscal year. A, Prior Area Chamber of Commerce, forty percent, forty-three thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars forty cents from account number seven-five-seven-five-five-five-zero-nine-zero. B, Prior Public Schools, twenty percent, twenty-one thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars seventy cents from account number seven-five-seven-five-five-five-zero-eight-five. Item C, Prior Main Street, ten percent, ten thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars thirty-five cents from account number seven-five-seven-five-five-five-one-one-zero. Item V, discussion of possible action to approve hotel motel tax grant application for Prior Patcher's Quilt Guild Quilt Show, September seventeen and eighteen, two thousand twenty-one, in the amount of three thousand dollars specifically toward Prior, Mays County Fairground Rental Judge, Judge Fees, Supplies, and Rentals. Item W, discussion of possible action to approve hotel motel tax grant application for Prior Area Arts and Humanities, Northeast Oklahoma Area Artist Show, October eighth through sixteen, two thousand twenty-one, in the amount of two thousand dollars. Item X, discussion of possible action to approve hotel motel tax grant application for Prior Area Chamber of Commerce, two thousand twenty-one Christmas Parade of Lights on December the second, two thousand twenty-one, in the amount of two thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars specifically towards sound system rental dinner for float judges and all-day volunteers, plaques, and for commercial entries, grand marshal television personalities. Item Y, discussion of possible action amending the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two street budget pursuant to council action from item six-H on September seventh, two thousand twenty-one, adjusting line item one-four-one-four-five-five-four-one-zero from six hundred ninety-one thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars to seven hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars and changing the street budget total to two million five hundred forty thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. Item Z, discussion of possible action regarding accepting the resignation of Ashton Gann from his position as volunteer firefighter, effective October one, two thousand twenty-one. Item AA, discussion of possible action regarding accepting the resignation of Natrone Wolf from his position as volunteer firefighter, accepted October first, two thousand twenty-one. This is the consent agenda. Which items would council like to remove from the agenda?
Z.
Item Z.
G.
Item G.
AA.
F.
G, item F. Item AA. Are there others? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve all of the items that were not removed.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion, Council Smith, second. Nance, discussion? Hearing none, call for vote.
Shitwood?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item F, discussion of possible action authorizing mayor to sign Emergency Management Performance Grant, fiscal year two thousand twenty-one sub grant application. Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion Smith, second. Shitwood, discussion?
Uh, have to abstain from this one. I'd like to thank Mike and Johnny for all they do for Mays County and the City of Prior.
Absolutely. Absolutely, we are blessed. Other discussion? Item F, call for vote?
Trammell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Abstain.
Shitwood?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item G, discussion of possible action regarding hiring Kelsey Kearns as fitness coordinator at Prior Creek Recreation Center, Range D, Step One, annual wage thirty-three thousand five hundred ten dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion Shropshire, second. Shitwood, discussion?
Is she here?
Ms. Kearns?
Would you want to come up and give us a little speech?
Welcome.
I love her very much.
Introduce yourself.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Kelsey.
Mr. Britton, would you escort her to the microphone?
Sorry.
It is.
Sorry.
First of all, I'd like to say that when we interviewed Ms. Kearns, there were three very qualified candidates, but in the end, Ms. Kearns won. And we're looking forward to working with her and glad she's a part of the Rec Center.
Well, Kelsey, what would you like to tell us about yourself?
I have nothing prepared.
Very good. Thank you very much. She's.
Congratulations.
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 I would say that's important thing.
Yes. That's great.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, that's pretty cool. All right, council? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Houston. All right, with nothing else, we'll call for vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Shitwood?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. Sure enough.
Jimmy will be seeing you soon.
Hey, all of you are welcome at nine-thirty.
There you go.
Nine-thirty?
You've got clothes for you.
We're five AM, number two.
Yeah.
There you go, Jimmy.
Yeah, here we go.
Yeah, I've been to that class.
Throw some ducks out there, he'll be there.
Item Z, discussion of possible action regarding accepting the resignation of Ashton Gann from his position as fire, volunteer firefighter, accepted, effective October first, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion Shitwood, second. Smith, discussion?
I'd just like to thank Ashton for his time as a volunteer firefighter with the City of Prior, very much appreciated. On behalf of myself and the council, thank you.
You're here. Other discussion? Call for vote?
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Shitwood?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item AA, discussion of possible action regarding accepting the resignation of Natrone Wolf from his position as volunteer firefighter, effective October first, two thousand twenty-one. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion Shitwood, second. Smith, discussion?
Again, I'd like to thank Natrone for his time with the, with the Volunteer Fire Department of Prior. On behalf of myself and the city council, thank you very much for your time.
You're here.
Appreciate it.
Call for vote?
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Shitwood?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, committee reports, budget personnel break field is not here. Shropshire, anything?
Yeah, it's second Tuesday next month.
Second Tuesday next month, everybody come. Uh, item B, ordinance insurance. Shropshire?
Not at this time, we're waiting on one to come back from the lawyer.
Very good. Item C, Smith, Street Department.
No items at, at this time, so right now we don't have.
Nothing at this time?
Yep.
Item eight, unfulorable business, no of none. Item nine, is there a motion to adjourn?
He's not here.
Motion?
You can't do it.
I'm close, catcher.
Where you're stuck. That's what I was thinking.
Who's gonna make that?
Who made the motion? Was that Smith?
I'm your second.
Shropshire and Smith, second. Call for vote?
Smith?
Yes.
Shitwood?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
We know that Brother Catcher is probably listening in. And we missed his presence, we hope you heal well. Public Works Authority, we're called to order. Item two, approval minutes, September seventh, two thousand twenty-one meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion Shropshire, second. Shitwood, discussion? Call for vote?
Shitwood?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, adjourned, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion Shropshire, second. Nance?
You gotta keep up the good work.
Call for vote?
Trammell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Shitwood?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
That's come from this side, yeah.